Good evening, welcome. The time is now, good evening. Good evening, welcome. The time is now six o'clock and this is the June 2nd, 2025 Special Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. In the event of an emergency, please remain calm, exit through the double doors you came in, make a right, and proceed to the stairwell. If the hallway is blocked, then exit to the left, around the corner, and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator and let us know if you need any assistance. At this time, we ask that everyone please silence your cellphones and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll pivot to our city clerk, Ms. Julie English, to present the agenda for tonight.
We have a very long agenda today. We will have a public hearing on ordinance 2935, 2936, and 2937, and all three of them are part of the fiscal year 26 budget.
Thank you, Ms. English. Hearing that, I will entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda as presented.
Move.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the chair votes aye and the agenda has been adopted. We will begin with the public hearings for tonight, ordinance numbers 2935, 2936, and 2937. Anyone wishing to speak on any of the public hearings, please stand now and be sworn in by the city clerk. And I repeat, if you are planning to speak on any of the three ordinances dealing with the fiscal year 26 budget, please stand now and be sworn in by the city clerk.
Yeah. If you want to testify about, or explain about the-
With the budget.
With the water sewer fees going up or anything like that, you can certainly stand up and get sworn in.
Don't be shy. Is that everyone? Okay, if you could raise your right hand, please. You could raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you all. Thank you, Ms. English. We'll start with ordinance number 2935. Ms. Boucher.
Certainly, as you mentioned, ordinance number 2935, this is one of the budget ordinances. Specifically, it's an ordinance appropriating the necessary funds for the operation of the government and administration of the city of Salisbury for the period of July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026, establishing the levy for the general fund for the same fiscal period and establishing the appropriation for the water and sewer, parking authority, city marina, and stormwater funds.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher. At this time, the public hearing for ordinance number 2935 is now open. Anyone wishing to speak and who has been sworn in by the city clerk may enter the podium. Please state your name and if you are a city resident. And there is no time allotment for this.
Hi, I'm Robert Taylor. I'm a city resident. This is on the main budget ordinance, right? The general fund, that good stuff. Well, I think the first thing we need to do is do a shout out to the mayor. This is the second time, year, when there's been no tax increase. As you may remember, before he became the mayor, the 10 or so years prior to that, the city's tax rate went up 26%, mostly under Jake Day and Heath when he became the acting mayor. The final year, 2024, was about a 5% increase, bringing it up to 26% for that total period of 10 or so years. So anyway, that's, I think, a point well to be noted. I also want to make some comments in terms of the coming budget. I don't have a breakdown of all the expenditures, but I have been given a list of expenditures that have been either, as I understand it, either made by or reimbursed to Mr. Doughty. Doughty, pardon me if I got that wrong. And this includes a lot of things that look to me to be quite questionable, including a lot of clothing items. J.Crew factory hoodie jacket, $171 and change. There's a Nike thing, jacket and hoodie, about 80 bucks. There's another thing for t-shirts, hoodies, and a backpack, 250 bucks. Altogether, a bunch of clothing, and clothing related, looks like it totals probably 1,000, maybe a little bit more. I'm not aware that a city council member has the city budget to use as his credit card for clothing and stuff like that. There's some other things on here that I won't make a big issue about, maybe a gray area, candy for the Christmas parade. I mean, it used to be, I think, members would just go out and go to a store and buy a bag of candy on their own dime. I guess that can't be complained about. There's also an item, though, that I think is very serious, and it has to do with the, looks like Angela Alserbrook, as you may know, is our new state senator. These look like probably political donations. They may not be, I don't know. Angela Alserbrook's open house, usually open house, and this is after she was elected, but normally, things like that go into the campaign fund of the candidate. And I tell you, I've got some real concerns about this. And I think, I mean, I was the county council's attorney, and I think if a county council member did stuff like this, it would be grounds for being thrown out of office under their charter. Now, I don't know about the city. It may also warrant a referral to the state prosecutor. These are serious matters, and if there's anything like this in this year's budget, its coming budget, it should be struck out. City council members should be given a very small amount of money for stuff, and swag and contributions to other candidates should not be included in that. This needs to be looked at seriously right now. I understand you'll probably pass the budget next week, but that gives time to look into this. I also understand, street talk, and this is Mr. Doughty again, I understand that there's an effort underfoot to essentially pack the council staff with another person, another employee. How many do you really need? I mean, we have a tight fiscal situation in this city, and we don't need to waste money on positions that we don't need. So I think that's another matter that needs a lot of discussion before the budget is passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just here to complain about the possible increase of the sewer. I live just outside of the city limits.
She wants your water and sewer. Do you want her to wait for that?
Oh.
If you don't mind waiting, we'll-
We're gonna talk about that right next.
I'm sorry.
Yep, the very next one, yes.
I directed her by accident, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Now you're comfortable.
Because I thought this was all-
Yeah, you have practice. You're experienced now. You're old pro.
Lucy, I'm flustered.
Any other comments for the public hearing on the ordinance number 2935 for the operation of the government administration for the period of July 1, 2025 to July 30, 2026? Hearing are seeing none, the time is 6:09, and the public hearing for ordinance 2935 is now closed. Moving on to ordinance number 2936, Ms. Boucher.
Certainly, ordinance number 2936, this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to amend water and sewer rates, to increase rates by 6% and making said changes effective for all bills dated October 1, 2025, and thereafter unless and until subsequently revised or changed.
Time is, excuse me, time is 6:09. The public hearing for ordinance number 2936 is now open. You may, you may enter the podium and please state your name if you are a city resident.
Still nervous.
It's all right.
All right. Well, I just live out, my name is Connie Lewis, and I just live outside of the city limits. And we don't pay city taxes, we pay the county taxes, but however, my house is hooked up to city sewer. And I don't have, I don't have city water, I have a well. But with the increases going up, I grabbed some of my paperwork and back in 19, or back in 16, it was 19980. I know it doesn't sound too bad, but, and then it went up the next year to 20350. Matter of fact, it went up at the end of the year, 2016. And then in 17, it was 203, and then at the end of that year, it went up to 21764. And then I, 18, it jumped up to 22777. And 1920, in 2023, it was 25850. And then, and then it went up to 30705. And when you're on a fixed income, that's, I mean, just that little bit is hard, it really is. And I mean, I just don't know, I mean, there's only one person in the house, so, you know, so much. But that's my main concern, that it keeps, it seems like, just keeps going up, you know, and it's hard. It really is. I mean, you know, our taxes are gonna go up, and I know everything else is going up too, but when you're on a fixed income, our income does not go up. I don't know if there's any kind of a thing they could put in there, like for how many in a household, or what, I don't know. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to us.
Good evening. Lisi Gengert, 316 North Division Street. You pretty much said it all, but I came up to speak for some people who have talked to me about the creep of the fees and the taxes, and people who, they buy houses, for instance, in the Newtown neighborhood, we get people, they buy houses, these are expensive houses, they're old houses, historic houses, people love the neighborhood, they're trying their best, we're all trying our best, and then you start getting the increases, such as you were saying. And, you know, fixed income is the hardest hit, obviously, other people are also hard hit, and it used to be utilities had a responsibility, it seemed that they carried out, that you plan for everything. You look, what's our infrastructure, what's our maintenance plan, what's our future plan, what updates are we going to need? And it was all factored in, and you didn't start getting spikes every year, and then big chunks over several years in a row. So I would just like to suggest that I don't know what influence this group has over how management does things for this type of thing, but it directly affects your city people. This is the kind of thing that makes people have to leave town, that when they have their expenses that they planned for, maybe some increase is built in, but then you start getting 6% for a number of years in a row, and that's, that's pretty bad. So I just wanted to, again, speak for some folks who have spoken to me.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Langford. I live at 1026 Arthur Court. I guess on the water sewer thing, it's kind of one of those things where I think the bill comes due, and the increase, I understand, is like often just a matter of like, needs to be done. So I, that I understand. I'd like to suggest one of the, you know, it's obviously probably multiple factors that go into, you know, running the city's complex, but I think waiving the connect fees in Horizon programs, for instance, is part of why we're seeing an increase in water sewer. That's part of what those connect fees pay for, is the infrastructure and the maintenance of those things. If those, if that maintenance is not kept up, then it goes on to the consumer. So then you end up having water utility bills increase on the consumer, when really the businesses, you know, should have been paying their fair share as they connect to our grid, right? And then in that, proposing a solution moving forward, I also suggest that we should really look, I mean, again, might be too late this year, but moving forward, it'd be really great if we could close the tax gap that currently exists in the city versus the county. So that is, there's, I guess, two overlay of a system, there's the incorporated city limits, right? There's also a water sewer system that is the city, it's correct? So any new commercial construction in the entire county, at this point, is being connected to the city water sewer system. So like, if that is outside the incorporated limits, then that business doesn't pay the taxes, right? And we're losing all that revenue, right? So then we see an increase on consumers here of 6% because we have businesses that are benefiting from our city water sewer system that aren't paying their fair share, right? Because they're not in incorporated city limits. This also has the additional effect of disenfranchising voters, right? Because a lot of these places, like if you look at the West End, you're gonna be looking at a lot of like aging communities, you're gonna be looking at, yeah, just a lot of different apartment complexes, right? A lot of renters, right? And so a lot of people who are in a position, you know, people are not, it's not something just for people in their 20s, right? Or 30s, like there's, you know, renting is an option that works for a lot of different people at different points in their life, different stages, but sometimes it's something where that's the only thing that's afforded, that's the only opportunity for them. So now, they're outside the city limits, they're getting these increases on water sewer, like we just heard from, from the, from, thank you, you know, from, but like, yeah, I think it's affecting a lot of populations that everyone in this room cares about, right? And so if we can incorporate more of what already exists in the water sewer system, right, which is the cities, if those businesses, those apartment complexes and stuff like that, start paying their fair share, you also get the increase on like rental applications, right? Like the rental fees on units, those, all those businesses, all those apartment complexes on the West End, they're not paying those to the city. So like, I manage College Park Apartment, as some of you may know, that is in the incorporated city limits, so I'm paying, it went up. I'm not here to complain about it going up from, I think, 50 to $75. I'm like, yeah, I'm not, I don't own College Park Apartments, right? I manage the property. So I'm not worried about that. Like, I believe the city, the business that I work for and employ for should be paying their fair share as they're operating in the city. But I think that there are people that are benefiting from our city system, with the water sewer, that aren't paying their fair share, you know? And I think that that could close this tax gap. Again, you probably are in a place where we just have to see that increase now, but you were speaking to a long-term pattern, you know, both the women who spoke. So I think that like, in order to arrest that development, we have to look like long-term planning, and it's like, if we can incorporate it more into the city, we increase the amount of people who can vote in our elections that can participate in our city government, we increase the tax revenue, and, yeah, benefits like the consumers, the people that we care about without having to like, without, you know, this, this to me is like where, you know, government can really make a difference. So it's like, if we look, I don't know what that process of doing that, but they're already benefiting from our system. And any new businesses doing commercial construction rely upon that. They can't, you can't put a, like the state fire code, Maryland State Fire Code requires like a certain kind of commercial sprinkler system for any new construction. You can't do that on a septic. It's only in the water, city water sewer system. So that's the only way that's getting built. So they're going to build it, it is being built, so let's just make those people pay their part, you know, when that comes, and then we may be able to stop this from getting worse. I think that's all. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you. Any other comments relative to the water and sewer rate increase? Hearing are seeing none, the public hearing is closed, the time is now 6:18. Next, we have ordinance number 2937. Ms. Boucher.
This is ordinance number 2937, this is referred to as the Fee Ordinance, and specifically, it's an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to amend, or sorry, ordinance of the city of Salisbury to set fees for the FY 2026 and thereafter unless and until subsequently revised or changed.
Thank you. The time is now 6:19. Public hearing for ordinance number 2937 is now open. Those wishing to speak, please enter the podium and state your name, and if you are a city resident, please.
Again, Lisi Gengert, 316 North Division. I was thinking to myself, it's pretty obvious, I don't need to say it, but maybe I'll say it anyway, when you're setting the fees and everything, same thing we've all been talking about here, is, you know, please keep in mind, all these people, that whatever it is, fees they're gonna have to pay, don't keep increasing and putting hardships on people, and that they're reasonable, and, because the government is here to help everybody, government isn't here to do things only their way, there are lots of different people in the city, lots of different perspectives, lots of different needs, and I would just like to see more of that all being taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the fees for fiscal year 26? Hearing are seeing none, the time is 6:20. The public hearing for ordinance number 2937 is now closed. That concludes the public hearing portion of the agenda. We now open the floor up for public comments. Anyone wishing to speak, may enter the podium as well if-
Still a city resident, Robert Taylor. A couple of things. First, as you probably know, another lawsuit has been filed regarding the Salisbury Town Center Apartment Project. This one is to rescind essentially the sale of the property that the city made a year or so ago. It's a very interesting lawsuit. It's about 40 pages long, I think probably the solicitor's seen it, I don't know whether you all have, I got a copy from the court, and I'll be glad to send it to you. I think there's some serious stuff in it. And another serious aspect of it is, should the city, again, as they did in the last lawsuit, have, pay an attorney to represent it? Because in this new lawsuit, just like the last one, the city and the developer are defendants. Now, the developer has every interest in the world to raise all the issues it wants to, and the same issues that the city would raise. So why spend money for something that they're going to do anyway? Again, the city's in a tight fiscal position, it doesn't have money to throw around. How much did the legal fees on the last suit cost? We've asked, we haven't filed a PIA or anything, but some of us would like to know. That was just wasted money, in effect. The other thing I want to point out is, there was an article that Mr. Doughty is now proposing that the city do away with what they call the 4-2 law that was passed, I think, 15 or so years ago. I was part of the group that pushed for that. We were very concerned at the time, still are, that houses in single-family neighborhoods, and we're only talking primarily here, single-family, we're not talking apartments and things like that, with one exception, and that is the Spring Chase PRD, they asked to be included, so they're included with our districts, to keep them from essentially becoming rooming houses. And that's been a great benefit to the city. It preserves the ambiance of neighborhoods that were planned and zoned for that use, single-family. People who want to live in rooming houses can live elsewhere, there are plenty of apartments that can be used for them, that they can occupy. So I think this is another serious matter that needs to be, essentially, I think this one just needs to go into the circular file. Maybe, maybe there can be some tweaks in the ordinance, it's been 15 years, the law, nothing, nothing's cast in stone, but in terms of doing away with it, it just simply doesn't make sense. Why destroy a large part of the city in just the notion of, I guess it goes to affordable housing or something like that? Treat affordable housing elsewhere, otherwise, I've mentioned before, let's start requiring developers, when they do a subdivision, to provide a certain amount of truly affordable or attainable housing. That's the way to solve that problem, not screwing up the established parts of the city. Good evening.
Thank you.
Joe Sciuffino, Salisbury resident. An issue I brought up with the county commissioners a couple of years ago was about gas leafblowers. For the, hundreds of cities across the country have banned them, they're loud, the decibel level's incredible. I have neighbors that have landscapers come, and, and last Thursday, I actually had to go out. They came by at 7:00, and for a half hour, next door to me, these two, two guys with gas blowers, I'm sitting trying to have dinner, I could barely talk to my wife. You know, for the city to ban it, I don't know if that would work because of surrounding areas, it would probably have to be a county, and I'm gonna address the county again. It's just, it's just an issue, I talked to neighbors and they complained too, but nobody, nobody gets off their duff and does anything, so I'm the loud mouth. But I would like, even if, if we can't get it banned, at least limit the hours, like 9 to 5 or something. You know, I had company come over, and we're sitting in the backyard on a weekend, and there go the leafblowers, you know, and for a half hour, 40 minutes, you know, it's, it's impossible. So if there's anything we could do, I'd appreciate it, and I'd volunteer to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, Lisi Gengert, 316 North Division. I also want to speak on the 4-2 for a bit. I saw the article that WBOC put out, and that's what actually brought me to the meeting tonight to say something about that from the beginning. Rules are usually made for the lowest common denominators. If everybody always did the right thing, you wouldn't need any rules. So that's one of the reasons something like the 4-2 comes in, is that anytime somebody can buy a property and jam people in, they're probably gonna do it, because they're gonna make more money, as opposed to taking everything else into consideration. I think it would be a big mistake to get rid of it. I come from the perspective of living in Newtown, and there's the historic value that areas bring to a town. Look at Easton, look at Berlin, look at Williamsburg, I look at all these places where people pay money to go and live in, be in, visit historic-type things, and the people that are in Newtown are there because they love it. I can't tell you how many times people say, oh my God, I saw my house, I fell in love with it, this was my dream house, I've dreamed of living in a Queen Anne, Victorian, my entire life, and now I do. This is something that they really, really want. And again, people in this city have different perspectives, they have different preferences, and the rules that are made should take all of that into consideration. And if you try to take something like, like Newtown, our representative has been heard saying that she doesn't want our property values to increase, and she's been heard to say that she doesn't see why all these houses sit so empty. Yes, she did, and that they should be filled up. So that scares us about, okay, what's a city council where somebody on the city council thinks that way? Because we're already dealing with over occupancy that the city doesn't, has not seemed to have any interest in enforcing. I know that there's problems in the way of doing that. But again, rules are made for the lowest common denominators, and you get people that are opportunists, you get people that don't care, you get people that are super greedy, and they're just gonna come in and do it. So again, I think to get rid of it is a huge mistake, especially in an area like Newtown. We do have apartments in, in there that were grandfathered when the historic district came in, so we have plenty of apartments in Newtown, and we have the single-family houses as well. And so we're, we're gonna be watching this very carefully to, but again, really think that it would be a big mistake to get rid of it. And if you want to look at different alternatives, sure, let's do that, but not get rid of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. David James, Salisbury city resident, also a county resident. I'm saying that for a reason. I'm up here with a concern about the homeless, once again. Couple of things I'm seeing going on, and I like what Mr. Taylor said about giving these developers all these tax breaks and stuff. Maybe if they're gonna have these things going on around here, maybe they should house some of the people under the bridge. We're concerned we're getting some people to do a mural over here where the crosswalk is. Well, guess what? Within walking distance of that is the homeless under the bridge. So if we're gonna do a mural, maybe we should put homeless lives matter. I'm saying that for, cut to the county also, because I don't know how much of influence we have on what's going on with the liquor board being where it is, by, over the Biakmi. But if you haven't noticed, there's a halo shelter right behind it. And what happens with those people, and I get a little emotional because I deal with the homeless, is they go straight over there, and they get drunk. So why have a liquor board? If, I mean, when their rent comes back up, maybe, I don't know if y'all have any impact on it, and I'm gonna say it to the county council, maybe not allow them to put that liquor board right there. If you have any power with this dispensary, it's coming over there. Maybe you need to stop it, because not only you have the halo shelter, you have the substance abuse clinic across the street. Let's consider those that maybe not be able to vote for you, but are just as important as the person that can vote for you. And this isn't something about being Republican, Democrat, conservative, or liberal. It's about being a human being. If we can just work together, those things we can change together, those other things we think we can't come to agreement on, watch that open up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Perenski, Salisbury resident. I know I missed the public hearing, but it's okay. I'll just share some thoughts real quick on just the most recent budget. I know we've had a lot of conversations about, like, affordable housing, attainable housing, and I just did some back-of-the-napkin math here. But since 2020, we've seen a 5% increase in property tax, thirty-seven and a half percent increase in trash, ten-dollar increase in stormwater fee, forty-six percent increase in water and sewer. So if you are just like a regular family, and let's say you're using about 10,000 gallons of water, which is probably low for a lot of households, your average yearly cost has increased about $379 in the last five years. So as we look at, you know, the budget, and tax increases, water increases, the, where city resources go, who we give opportunities to, who we don't, I just wanna, wanna make sure that we're still looking at, like, this is, this is a real number. This isn't, this isn't like a hypothetical, this is like from the water bills that are on my refrigerator. You know, this is like, this is real money, so. And then that doesn't even include anything we pay to the county. So I'm hoping that eventually we will address that, but it's just a big, it's a big number when you actually add it up. I mean, our costs have increased $380 over the past five years. So that's, that's a lot of money. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Floor is still open for anyone wishing to speak. None, thank you for your public comments. It's not on the agenda, but we'll pivot to administration or to council if there are any comments that might be made.
I don't know if everyone has noticed on Eastern Shore Drive that the Hometown Hero banners are up, and you should go ride by and look at them, and, you know, it's just so amazing to have them up and see people. Because a lot of us, we do not know everyone who has served our country that is from the city of Salisbury. And neither will, we probably see them all, but it's just so quaint and nice seeing them up there as they are. It did my heart good to go there. I was in the rain taking pictures of the banners. But it did my heart good to see them, and I'm hoping that throughout this city and the county, that we will see many, many more.
Agreed.
And I'm hoping that they will remain up, instead of taking them down. Because when those people went out to fight for us, they went on their own accord. Some of them were drafted, but most of them went on their own accord. And I don't feel as though they should be taken down. They should remain in place. And we should, every month, be finding places to put them throughout this city and throughout the county. And that's my belief, and that's what I truly want to see happen. Also, Saturday, I went to Waterside Park, and they did a tree planting ceremony there Saturday, WAC, Wycomico Environmental Trust. And it was really nice. This is not my first time going. I've gone, the very first time they started planting trees there. But it was so amazing to see so many kids. A lot of children out there, and a lot of young ladies lifting those trees and digging the holes to plant the trees in. And this is what we need to see around our city. We need to see more involvement. I don't know how it was advertised, but I did advertise it on my Facebook page, because I'm not an Instagrammer or any of that. But I do try to post things from the city and things that are going on throughout the community. So tap into either one of the type that has Facebook. Tap into our Facebook pages and see what we do, and see where we go, because we do go numerous places. Because I missed one place with the mayor Saturday, because I was so doing fifty million things, but that WAC was very nice, and they had all kinds of information out there for us to, and that park is becoming a lovely park, and I love it. It is in my district, but even just the trees, it's amazing to see. So, you know, these are things that we need to be pushing and working for, working for the environment and working to make our city beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson.
Is there a charge for one of those banners up on people?
Can I answer? Yes, there is. I think it's 132, if you want both sides, it's 13280, and then I think it's 6440 for a one-sided one. And that means somebody else will take your side, but so you won't own that banner. If you're, if you're on one side and someone else is on the other side, you will not own that banner. That banner will come back to the city. But if you get the double-sided one, which most of those people that are hanging up there, they do have both sides of that banner, and that was 130, I think, 13280, because I got one for my daughter. But if you want to, I can link you up with whoever, and Andy can as well, so you can get, if you want one, to get one.
The Uber to Haverhill that they charged, I think, it's not, it's not that much, but I didn't know how much they did charge.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. They do charge, yes.
It looks like there's a Facebook page, or you can email Nicole Bosman, correct?
Yeah, and the charge is just for the cost of manufacturing. We put them up for free, so there's no cost for the labor, it's just the cost to actually produce the banner.
So if you wanna, if you wanna email-
The gardener sign is the ones who, that do the signs on Snow Hill Road.
If you want to email SalisburyHometownHeroes@gmail.com, you can, you can get in touch with Nicole Bosman there. Thank you for that. Yes.
Is he gonna be alive?
Yes, yeah, my daughter's alive. And I think most of them, or that I saw, it probably was another older, couple of older gentlemen that maybe I couldn't imagine him being alive right to this day because of the photos, you know, on the banner. But most of those people are still alive, and they're serving the VFWs. Yeah.
Mr. Kitzro, do you, do you think it'd be good for us to do some sort of publicity about, you know, wanting to, if persons want to, I'm not sure if we did one with the county, but if we want to, or folks wanting to be a part of that program to get some sort of, some sort of-
I was gonna say, I think we're gonna try to do something with April on the West Main Street, and put those up permanently. So that's a whole other project, so she's gonna head that up, I think.
Yeah, that's what I was, if we could put something-
Sure.
Public education about-
It wasn't on the city website, but it wa-
It was on the county? Was it on the county?
I can do that.
Yeah.
Really do that, sure.
Because a lot of people have contacted me, and I give them the information to, I direct them to who they need to be to see or talk to. Yes, ma'am.
The suggestion that comes to me is to have a link on the city website to a hometown hero and feature a different person every month.
Yeah, that would be nice. Thank you.
Nice idea.
But a link to the hometown heroes, yes, yes, ma'am.
Nice idea.
And keep her rolling. That would be nice.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Be a motivation to get somebody to-
Yeah. But I have quite a few people, I think we only had sixty poles on Eastern Shore Drive, so we only, I think, thirty, were there thirty flags, thirty banners?
I think we thought we could do two flags per pole of thirty, so like about sixty there. And then if we wanted to expand to West Main Street or other locations, I think we had identified at least a couple hundred people who would potentially qualify, but we're open to expanding the program based off of the community's desire to participate.
And the ones you have on, Lord, let me get it right, the ones you have on Eastern Shore Drive, they can be moved over to?
Absolutely.
Because they are the VFW, most of those are, and a lot of them are the VFW, they're veterans from, for foreign wars. So they are, that's who, and they still serve their residential or their actual VFW here in Salisbury.
Thank you all for that. Councilwoman DeSho?
Three things. There's one more forum that's taking place next week on the 12th, from six to eight, at the fire department. And for the comprehensive plan update focus group, this will be the fourth and final community introduction, not introduction, but invitation. I was happy because I got to go to the first event, and now on Sunday, Saturday, went to the final event. And I'm gonna get this correct. It was closing day of the NFL flag football, and it was at Y-Hi. And the nice thing about this is that it's a partnership that came about from the Governor's Office of Crime Prevention and Policy, plus Wycomico County Parks and Recs, plus our Salisbury Police Department. And they had over 175 kids, and it was really cool to watch. The nice thing is, is that they offered assistance if needed and scholarships. This is their first year. And again, started in April, they went for eight weeks, and they're looking to hope to do it again next year, and would like more sponsorship, so, you know, talk it up. We're talking about getting our young people involved in, not only in city, but things to do, and, you know, camaraderie, things like that. The other thing is, and you can ask Chief Frampton about this on the way out, because I don't have the details, go on their website, because the academy's this summer, correct, for kids, and they have two age groups. And that's, one's in August, I believe, and one the end of July, if I got that right. And they, we saw them last year when the kids graduated, and they were so excited. So if you need something really cool for your child or your grandchild, that's a great opportunity to get involved with that. And lastly, I, it keeps coming up, and I have people calling me and telling me, okay, you know, put up or shut up, basically. And I would like to request, and we've all talked about it before, if we can actually plan, and James, correct, David, anybody, you know, I think it should be something where we have a work session where we try to figure out what we can put in place moving forward as far as attainable housing requirements for builders. And I know Mr. Kitzro was nice enough to meet with me the other day about it. He thought I'd drop it, right? And he had some great insight on that as well. So President Doherty, I would like, if possible, to plan a work session that is to work on this and to move forward with it for the-
Yes, Councilwoman DeSho, yep, it's already on. When, it's been mentioned a couple of times, I advised our city clerk to put it on one of the summer months, once we could pass budget, and a couple of other things. We have a couple of closed sessions, not to pack the agenda, so we have planned for that, and that's what I mentioned in the article, that we'll be discussing that further of four-to-two, the ADUs, those programs. So it's already on the list, administration's been aware of that, so we all will be in discussion. But thank you for reiterating that, and I can't wait to have those discussion, those discussions here at our work session. We'll be dubbing that the housing work sessions, because we'll be, you know, kind of just discussing all those things. So the clerk has that on our request agenda items list, and we'll be discussing what the city can do to help in those. I'm sorry, Councilwoman DeSho, was there anything else you had to?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, that was it?
No, I'm sorry.
Sorry, apologies. Yes.
I just wanted to wish everybody a happy National Zoo and Aquarium Month. There's a lot of good stuff going on at the zoo. I attended the zoo commission meeting about a week and a half ago, and there's a lot of good news. We have two new, I'm going, Rias, I think is how you say it?
Yeah.
Raya, okay. Two new Rias, and there's quite a few more animals coming, so I'm not gonna steal the surprise. I'm gonna let them announce those themselves. But there are summer camps, much like what the fire department is doing. There are summer camps at the zoo. I highly recommend that everybody who has kids, please go check out SalisburyZoo.org and see what they have available for kids to do. There are a lot of programs. There's a beautiful new pavilion area there that can, for reading and things like that. There's storytimes, all that sort of thing. Another thing is, it is next Monday from four to nine, 10% of all sales and 50% of sales from the featured draft beer during the event at Burnish Beer Company will be donated to the Salisbury Zoo to support the animals and programs and conservation. So please go out and support. That's next Monday from four to nine. We will be here, and-
Do you want to move the meeting?
I don't know. Can we reschedule? No. Evening, I'm kidding. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we're gonna get through that meeting fast, right, guys? Like, like tonight? No. But, no, you know, it's really great to see the community coming together to support the zoo with different fundraisers and things. You can check out a lot of the stuff on their Facebook page, or you can go to their website, like I said, SalisburyZoo.org. There's so much exciting stuff happening at the zoo. I'm so excited for what's gonna be coming, and, and, and all the work that they're doing. Chuck is doing an amazing job over there, and I'm really proud of everybody who's, who's really lifting the zoo up and, and taking it into the next phase of its existence, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. I think, Mr. Kitzro, do you have something you wanted to?
Mayor did.
Oh, mayor, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna go after you. Yeah, I wanted to address your issue with regard to the water and sewer. I think Mike brought it up as well. You know, Andy and I spent a lot, Andy and I spent a lot of time on that, because, you know, unlike any time in the history of the water, you know, sewer plant, we are spending a tremendous amount of money on that for PFAS. We spent $12 million last year, we're spending $8 million this year. Originally, the increase was gonna be 12%, but we granularly went through it and said, do we need to do this now? Do we need to just do this right now? We got it down to six, you know, okay, we're heroes. It's still eighteen over, you know, over two years. So at the end of the day, I think we're trying to do the best we can, and primarily, it's a million-five in just debt service. It's a lot, in addition to the utility costs, in addition to the chemical costs, in addition to the labor costs. It's always built into the model. So it's, it's very difficult not to do what we're doing. Now hopefully, over time, we're hoping, we'll be very far along the curve relative to the grants that are gonna come in, and it'll be, our costs will flatten out over time, perhaps even go down. We may get reimbursement for the stuff we've already spent, hopefully. We'll see. But we're trying to be ahead of the curve, rather than being reactionary. We're probably the best municipality in the marketplace around the corridor in terms of being ahead of the curve, so we're trying to be that, that player. So we're trying to be responsible, a little painful on the front end. On the trash thing, Michael, the, a little bit that's driven by the county, because of the tipping fees cost, so we had a little bump in that. So, so some of this is just simply out of our control. It's certainly not through mismanagement, and we're trying to do the best we can. We know it's, you know, it's expensive either way. And I want to leave it there probably, but let me, let me just touch on four-to-two. I took two interviews this week about that topic, and, you know, four-to-two was originally put in place for the college, and it had the desired effect. It protected the neighborhoods inside the footprint, near the university, and it created a demand for people to build apartments, which is what we do. And if you look at the current pipeline of apartments right now, we're at about 1,000 units, not apartments, in total construction units, and a good percentage of those are apartments. So we're hoping that, you know, we're gonna keep up with the demand of the- So we're hoping that, you know, we're going to keep up with the demand of the university to the extent, I think it's, while I think there's room to make some modifications because we're getting other challenges other places for other reasons, I think we've got to be careful that we don't have unintended consequences. That's sort of my message on that topic. So you can take it for what it's worth. But that's all I had for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, anything?
One more thing?
Okay.
Need to go on April's website because she is going to come up with her own team for Relay for Life for the American Cancer Society. There's time to get on board.
You know, April's father was a track coach, and I've always challenged her that I want to race her and have hit the yard dash. So this might be the ideal time.
I got the first, I got the first seed for that one.
It could be a TikTok.
You know, my lung is gone now, so I don't have the breathing capacity that I used to.
50 yards?
As Sharon has said, I have been chosen to be the poster child for Relay for Life for the Cancer Society. So even if you can't give a donation, please, if you want to walk, please show up and walk with us in September, the 19th, from 5:00 to 10:00 at Winter Place Park. I would love to see some of you there for the support.
Thank you for that.
The first thing that I was going to say this evening was a thank you to Councilwoman Jackson, who did come up with the idea and did a lot of planning and preparation for the military flags. I just, and when I saw them, I was very moved too, and I just want to shout out appreciation for that. It was my first thing, because I was really glad that you did bring that up. A couple, just a few other things. I just really want to go back to the administration and the mayor's office to do a public service announcement about the 6% increase on the water and sewer, because I think a lot of people are confused and they're not understanding about where this is coming from. We may have a deeper understanding of it, but not everybody does, and it is a big hardship. I think in doing that, and part of the education should be some of the questions that the residents have brought up this evening, including what is the breakdown between, what is the county residents paying that get city water and the city resident paying? And also looking at businesses, what businesses are paying as far as a number, and what businesses are paying, a number, like what's the contribution and what's the bottom line number? I think people need to really see how all this impacts their personal bottom line. And when you get all that together, one, please share it with us, but also it would be great to put these things in the public announcement for education and awareness so people understand exactly where this is coming from, that it's just not an arbitrary number that was just picked out of the air. The other thing is, for the agenda, I would like to see, in the summer, of course, when we get through the budget issue, is look at, have each of the committees and commissions come before us and give us like a 15-minute, a 10, 15-minute summary of their progress, success, what their goals are, where they are, where they're planning to go, just something brief. But it would be nice. We have so many committees and commissions. We cannot report on every single one of them, but there's many of them. There's a lot going on in between sessions and stuff. So it would be really good to have them come forward and give, you know, an update on what they're doing. Everybody else has said stuff about the zoo, about activities, events, so there's a lot going on in Salisbury, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Council Vice President. Thank you all for that. Just two things on mine. I want to, one of the items in the budget that we just had a public hearing for, and actually Councilwoman Jackson brought it forth before any other council member could, was the playground, the summer playground program that we're going to be bringing back. That's probably the best thing that I appreciate counsel for, definitely sticking behind and, you know, wanting to do an administration backing. That's something that I've heard about, so I'm glad that it's coming about. I'm hoping we can maybe do a little preview of that this summer before. I know the budget will be passed afterwards, but we can find some funds to start that up, because that's something that the city really did, and we heard some buzz about that. But I want to, that's one of the best things that we did, and we added in to the mayor's proposed budget. So again, thank you all for your support behind that. The second thing with the conversation on the water and sewer, and again, thank you, Council Vice President, on, we mentioned it during budget to get some verbiage on that. Yes, I appreciate you all for that. But one thing in that we actually, we put in the budget is a program. It's WIN Water Incentive Program. And so there's, it's on the city website. If you go to our City of Salisbury website at the search bar, if you search in water incentive program, you're able to fill in either a paper application or an online application for, depending on your household size, for, you know, the program to assist with those water bills. And, you know, council, along with administration, puts funds in a, puts money in a fund to make sure that we help our residents with those water bills, and that goes directly to the finance department, and they can assist you with that. So definitely do some research on that and definitely utilize that program that we allocate funds for. So we understand that, again, you know, times are tough for a lot of our residents, and, you know, we're trying to do our best there, but that program's there for our residents to use, and we want to make sure you all have full access to that. So, but thank you for your comments there. That is all I have. Thank you all again. Next. Yes. Go ahead, sure.
Okay. I'm asking as I genuinely don't know.
Yes, ma'am.
The water at Unity Square, where does that come from?
That is it.
City water. Yeah. And there's a recapture piece to that as well. So we're not using, you know, continuous.
No. It's like the one at the fountain at the zoo that's been there for years. That's, yeah, it's, yeah, yep. But thank you all for that.
President Doherty, one quick thing. I just want to ask the administration about Carroll Street. When can we see some change? When is that going down?
And he's like, through what means left?
Please.
Just quickly.
It's in June. So what's interesting is our vendor has been selected. We have everything lined up. We are next in line on their schedule. It's just when they finish, they're coming right to us. It's just that timeline, because of weather and some different conditions, continues to push back their previous site, but we are next. So when, the minute we find out, we're going to let everybody know. We'll hopefully have about a two-week window to let people know to get prepared. They said mid-June, it could be late June, but we're going to really try to be as less disruptive, but also let people know what's going on. But we're hoping.
Good news.
The project ballooned a little bit, not in price, but in scope. Andy's going to do the piping.
Yep, got it.
Striping.
Myself.
Just to save us a few dollars.
It'd be like, it isn't.
Getting your kids out there with some.
Maybe, maybe.
Oh, let me do the, let me do the strip.
Thank you all for that. Again, we'll see you next Monday, 6 o'clock, for our regular work session and legislative session. Thank you all. Me, sound adjourned.